Live on YouTube and then we're going to go ahead and start webinar.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Vote 2020, the first of two virtual forums featuring candidates for the Santa Monica City Council, co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund and the Human Relations Council Santa Monica Bay Area. Both cosponsors are nonpartisan, nonprofit organizations, and never support or oppose candidates for public office. My name is Karen Gunn, and I will be the moderator for these forums. As you probably know, this year, all registered California voters will automatically receive a vote-by-mail ballot in early October, and voters are being encouraged to return their ballots early to make sure they will be received by the registrar's office in time to be counted. For these reasons, we, meaning the sponsoring organizations, have committed to holding our forums earlier this year. We want you, our voters, to have the opportunity to hear from our local candidates by early October. This year, we have four open seats for four-year terms each and one uncontested seat for a two-year term. We've invited all nineteen candidates who have qualified to run for the four-year seats to participate, as well as Kristin McCowen, the uncontested candidate who will also appear on your ballot. The forum will be presented in two parts, one tonight and the other next Wednesday evening, September 23rd. Ten of the twenty candidates were invited to participate in tonight's forum, and the remaining ten have been invited to participate in the forum on the 23rd. Each candidate participating in tonight's forum will have the opportunity to answer a variety of questions with a maximum of one minute for each response. Questions have been gathered in advance from the cosponsoring organizations and through community outreach, and will be asked in random order according to a blind matrix created by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund. Timing this evening will be done by Kathy Gentile of the League of Women Voters of the Santa Monica Education Fund. She's represented in one little corner of your screen by a green square. There's a person behind that. It is a countdown timer, and you will see it go for sixty seconds to zero for each question. All candidates participating in tonight's forum have signed a confirmation form and committed to standards of civility and courtesy, helping us to maintain an atmosphere of respect and tolerance throughout the forum. We thank you for making that commitment. The questions are going to occur in what we'll call rounds, round one, round two, round three, and so forth. So let's turn to our first round. And to all of the candidates here, we'd like for everyone who's involved with this to be able to get to know you. So I will call your name. Please tell us who you are and why you're running for city council. Again, you each will have one minute to answer. I'm going to begin with Gleam Olivia Davis.
Well, good evening. Thank you to the Human Relations Council and the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica for sponsoring this candidate forum. I wish we could do it in person, but Zoom is a good option when we can't. I'm Gleam Olivia Davis. I have been on the city council since 2009. I'm running for reelection because Santa Monica is really at a crossroads here, and I know you frequently hear that. But we all know this has been an extraordinary year, not only because we have, of course, the pandemic of COVID-19, but of course, the civil unrest that arose at beginning with the murder of George Floyd. And so I think that it's really important now more than ever to have a steady hand at the tiller of the ship of state, if you will. And I've proven myself to be a person who can build consensus, who is a thoughtful advocate, and I think that I've earned another four years on the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, let me turn to Anna Maria Hara.
Good evening, and thank you as well to HRC and the League of Women Voters for allowing us this opportunity so that the community can get to know us better. My name is Anna Maria Hara, and I am an immigrant from Guatemala. I was appointed in January of 2019 to the city council. And ever since then, I have been directing staff from the DIES on ways to improve transparency, to bring about equity, language justice. I have requested statistics with demographics and gender breakdowns to create transparency. These are a few things that are part of my core value and that now have become values for the framework in which we do business in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hara. Next, Kristin McCowen.
Hi, thank you, HRC. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us tonight. My name's Kristin McCowen. I'm a native Santa Monica and a second-generation Santa Monicaan. I grew up going to our schools, loving this city. I moved away to work in public policy and political campaigns for several years. And I've recently returned to raise my two children to hope that they can have a future like the one I aspired to growing up here. Since being appointed to council in July, we're in really difficult, challenging times. And as someone who came on board when I did, I'm most concerned with our economic recovery, our social justice issues, and our access to affordable housing. Those are the three areas that I've been focused on since day one and will continue to be focused on when my term is allowed to continue in November for the next two years, and I hope to serve you proudly for those two years. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And then let me turn to Todd Minch. Remember to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, HRC, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for organizing this, and thank you all for your time this evening. Clearly, I'm the ringer here because I have never run for nor held a political office. So neophyte definition of. I've been a Santa Monica resident for over twenty years. I own and run my own digital media business that was clearly almost completely obliterated by the pandemic. So I had some free time when I got the email that candidates were opening up, and I decided to jump in with both feet. I've been politically active my whole life, but as I said, I've never run for anything officially. Being in a technology background, my focus is definitely on updating and modernizing certain aspects of the city council and the way local politics is done in general. I think there are some innovative areas that could be improved, and I'd like to spearhead that program. Obviously, we're in a difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Minch. We're going to move on to round two. And we have a question that is based on a number of contributions from different community members, including neighborhood groups and affordable housing advocates. So we're going to ask all of you to answer this particular question, and I will call on you by name after reading the introduction and the question itself. So here's the intro. In Sacramento, legislation was considered that would allow parcels in single-family neighborhoods to be subdivided into two lots. And on each lot, a duplex could be added. This would mean four units could be built where a single-family home once stood. The question, do you believe R1 districts should be kept as single-family neighborhoods? Or do you agree with the proposal I just described? Again, I will begin with Gleam Davis.
So I don't believe it's a binary choice, as the question suggests. It's important to remember that right now in an R1 parcel, due to the fact that we have to allow accessory dwelling units as well as junior accessory dwelling units, that in theory, three separate households could currently live on one parcel in the R1 zone. I did not support that legislation that allowed subdivision, but I have been contemplating the idea about perhaps allowing duplexes in the R1 zone if, in fact, the owner was willing to forego some of the additional square footage that might be associated with an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. Under state law, we cannot count that ADU square footage against our lot coverage restrictions. So you could actually get smaller buildings, more family-oriented units, and still maintain what people call the character of the R1 neighborhood. So I didn't support that legislation. I don't support subdivision, but I do think we need to bring diversity and affordability into our R1 zones.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I'm going to turn next to Anna Maria Hara.
So I think that as a council, we have already been making sure that we have additional affordable housing stock so that we can ensure that everyone is able to remain here in Santa Monica. For years, I spoke about making sure that my four daughters were able to remain here in Santa Monica. And were I a homeowner and had property, I would have loved to be able to create that space for my daughters so that they could remain here in Santa Monica. Unfortunately, since I'm not, I am hoping that others will be able to provide some space so that they can go ahead and not only be able to raise their children or bring them back if they cannot afford to live here in Santa Monica. So I think that we also.
Thank you, Anna. Kristin McCowen.
Hi. So I think that that legislation didn't make it through. So I think it's more most important to focus on what we're actually doing and what can be done and what I believe should be done. I believe that we absolutely have to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods and our tree-lined streets. I think council, by implementing sort of state law here locally and adding ADUs and JADUs, like Councilwoman Davis said, we've allowed R1 zones that would like to to expand opportunities for housing to more individuals in those neighborhoods. As someone who grew up in an area that once was an R1 zone and had been transitioned to an R2 zone after the freeway came through, I still believe neighborhoods to raise children and future generations, and even if it's not R1 zoning. But I do believe that that choice, at least right now, should fall to the people in those areas.
Thank you. Todd Minch. Please unmute yourself.
I think we can effectively selectively rezone R1 communities. So yes, I would be for that selectively. That's all.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to round three. Candidates for this round will be asking two different questions. The first question will be answered by one set of you, and the second will be answered by the remaining set. So for the first one, do you support the creation of an eleven-member police engagement and accountability commission to be appointed by the city council? Why or why not? Todd Minch.
Yes, I am unmuted. Yes, I do support that. I would argue that it needs to be on a volunteer basis. The city can't afford to pay. That's all.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen.
Yes, I do, as I made clear in the last council meeting, support the establishment of this oversight commission in the city. What the responsibilities are still to be determined, but I support the establishment of the commission. I support the work that was done by the Public Safety Advisory, the Public Safety Reform Advisory Committee. And I would, you know, it's the 21st century, and I think civilian oversight of police departments is where we're trending. And I think it's important that Santa Monica, because our citizenry is so engaged in the first place, that we have an opportunity to show what true community policing looks like, and that's a combination of civilian oversight with our public safety.
Thank you very much. Let me move to the second question. What does the phrase "defund the police," quote-unquote, mean to you? As a council member, how would you approach keeping Santa Monica a safe community? Anna Maria Hara.
Thank you. So defunding the police department does not mean taking away the funds. It means trying to find ways that we can better utilize the fundings that we already have. As we were looking into the recommendations from the Safety Advisory Committee, we stipulated that we would like to see some of those funds maybe go to providing additional officers, neighborhood officers that can assist the community. Maybe we can look at providing some additional ambassadors so that way they can help us through our open fields and parks. And that's what that means. It's to better invest the funding. It means that we don't have all of them as sworn officers, but that we still have enough of them to be able to protect us and to create that safety net that we all wanted.
Thank you. Gleam Davis.
Thank you. So I think the term "defund the police" is a catchphrase, and I don't think it has a lot of meaning. I much prefer the term we've been using, which is divest and invest, which means let's divest from those policing activities that we don't need and invest in those areas that will have an equal or even greater effect on crime prevention and solving, but will not involve necessarily a sworn officer with a gun. For example, let's improve our mental health facilities. Let's get our libraries back open. Let's improve our youth services so that we can prevent the need for having sworn officers who respond to actual crimes being committed. I think one of the great lessons of these past six months has been that typically, when we talked about public safety, we thought about police officers. Now, I think we're thinking in a much broader sense, encompassing an entire well-being schematic. And I think that's really a step forward, that we now know that a lot of things we do contribute to public safety, and public safety is not just.
Thank you. Let's move on to round four. And the question I'm going to ask next will be answered by all of you here. A community member sent this question in about our voting system here in Santa Monica. There is currently a voting rights lawsuit being fought in the courts that could result in the city moving to district-based elections for city council. Many people believe that retaining the at-large system and, that's a big "and", moving to a voting system of proportional representation, such as ranked choice voting, would be a better and more empowering solution for minority voters. Do you agree or disagree, and why? So I will start this out with, beginning with Todd Minch.
Thank you. My answer is yes. Can we do all of those things? Because they're all good ideas. And this is such a polarizing, divisive subject. And why couldn't we expand the city council and have new community members? So basically, yes to all of those ideas. You know, remarkable term for a politician, I'm taking the radical choice of saying yes to everybody's ideas. Because in this one case, that might actually work. That's all.
Thank you. Gleam Davis.
Sorry about that. So I oppose the lawsuit, and I'm glad to say that at least the current state of the lawsuit is that the city has prevailed. I think that breaking the city into seven balkanized districts with no council members elected at large is a mistake. And historically, what's been shown is that things like affordable housing suffer when you have district-based elections as opposed to at-large elections because it gives small pockets of people within those districts a larger voice. But I do believe that ranked choice voting is something that we should think about. Until recently, we weren't able to do it because the county was not able to accommodate ranked choice voting. But I think sometime in the future, we should definitely consider ranked choice voting because I do think that gives people an additional voice. But I'm not for districts. I think it balkanizes the city and leads to a lack of transparency because deals will be done in the back room between the various representatives and not on the die.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen.
So I oppose the district-based election lawsuit also. And I think, you know, the at-large system, in my opinion, actually makes all of the members of the council accountable to everyone in each neighborhood. And I, as a minority, I really worry that however these districts are drawn, these potential districts, they may potentially limit the number of minority voices on the council for a very long time. And right now, we have, you know, Anna and myself currently on council. And, you know, that's a great thing, and we need to maintain that level of diversity. We have four women on council. We need to maintain this diversity going forward, and I don't think we do that with districts. With regard to ranked voting, I think it's a good start. I think what people are looking for is like the leader. We need sort.
Thank you. Anna Maria Hara.
So there's two ways that I'm going to answer this question. One, I am definitely not for district elections. Why? Because I think that it doesn't allow for everyone to have the opportunity to lobby seven council members. That would be diminishing their voice and their selection of who it is that they can go and talk to and say, this is what I would like for you to move forward for me because of A, B, C, and all the way to Z. Number one. Number two, if we decide to go district elections, that will actually not include everyone within the city. The city used to have most of the Latino voters in the Pico neighborhood. It is not so anymore. So by doing that, we would be actually taking away those voices or representation of those voices that live around the rest of the city. So no, I am not for.
Thank you very much. Let me move to the next round. It's round five. For this round, I will pose some short questions and call on different subsets of you to answer each one. Again, I will be calling on you in something of a random order, according to the blind matrix I described before, that the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica developed. You again will have one minute to answer. This question will be directed at Kristin McCowen. What do you see as the most pressing short-term issues in Santa Monica? And what do you propose to do about them as a member of the city council?
So the two most pressing things in my mind are rent evictions and rent eviction moratoriums and support for small businesses. In both of those instances, council prior to my appointment started working toward getting additional funding to renters that need assistance. And I think any way that we can expand that in the future will be helpful. And the state legislation is helping to ensure that people can stay in their units through the end of the year without the fear of being evicted. With regard to small businesses, we're actually, I'm working with the Economic Recovery Task Force right now to try to identify some private sector dollars that we can drive to the city so that we can help lift up small businesses. And that's also for black-owned businesses through a specific project we're looking into. So those are the two things I'm doing currently.
Thank you very much. The next question will be directed at Gleam Davis and Todd Minch. How do you envision the relationship between the city, Santa Monica College District, and the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District in the future? I'll begin with Gleam Davis.
So I came up in the community as an education activist. So I am thrilled that we have such a fantastic school district and such an amazing resource in our community as Santa Monica College. And I think that the three institutions have worked very well together, and I hope they continue to work well in the future. Because of the relationships, for example, we are going to have a state-of-the-art lab school that will prioritize serving disadvantaged Santa Monica children in our civic center, a full-day daycare center. You can also see the relationship between the college and the school district with the rebuilding of the JAM's auditorium. The Santa Monica College has used some of their bond money to help us refurbish Memorial Park. So it's a tremendous working relationship. It's a tremendous synergy, and it's for the betterment of the entire community because we are a lifelong learning community. And having good schools and a wonderful institution like Santa Monica College is something that many communities would die to have, "die" is not a good word, but would love to have. And we're just lucky to have it.
Thank you. Todd Minch.
I think that's absolutely correct, that both are tremendous institutions. And the council, throughout the past few decades I've lived here, and both educational institutions themselves should be commended for the work they've done. We've all heard this a lot, I'm sure, but the last six months has been like ten years, and it's shown us what the future of education should look like. And we need to start altering both of those institutions so that they change much more rapidly and steer into that future. So once again, technology, it's what has to be done. It's what has to change. Also, just the educational force that both those institutions have to change the overall way students are educated and what they're educated to do in the future. I think those are two areas that we can aim at improvement on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed at Anna Maria Hara and Todd Minch. The question is, what do you want Santa Monica to look like in ten to fifteen years? And I will begin with Anna Maria Hara.
It's what I've always wanted Santa Monica to look like. An engaged, well-being, self-centered, being able to self-sustain from not only the community, but also the city. I want everyone to be able to know their neighbors and to be able to work alongside with them. I want our businesses to flourish because they are helping our community members to be self-sustained. I want our businesses to be engaged also with all of our labor unions. We should not be working in separation. We should be working together in order to make this a much better city than what it is already and for it to be the envious and continue to be the envious of everywhere in the world.
Thank you. Todd Minch.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to use it to describe my biggest of all the big innovative ideas. I want to work with our Congressman Ted Lieu and anyone else in Washington and the federal government who will listen to me to try and create a veterans' mental health and homeless outreach facility on the massively unused federal land just east of our city limits so that we can do something serious and tangible to alleviate the homelessness issue. That's not just a Santa Monica problem, but is a Los Angeles problem, is a West LA problem, et cetera, et cetera, every community in this area. And I think there can be an incredible effect on that if we develop and build a facility on those grounds. And I hope within ten years to break ground on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to the next question, which will be directed at Anna Maria Hara, Mario Fonda Bernardi, and Gleam Davis. The question is, what is the most, the one most important thing? Let me make sure I say that. The one most important thing you would like to accomplish in the next four years as a city council member? In other words, what is your top priority? And I will start with Anna Maria Hara.
My top priority will always be people. I think that we need to make sure that we have an equitable city, a transparency, so that everyone will be able to see what it is that we're doing, how we're doing it, and how are we going to service all of our city residents. I think that if we are able to engage our community in providing equity, everything else will come into place. Everybody else will be able to be engaged and everybody else will be able to raise our city the way that it should be. And I hope that I can continue to do that, as I have been doing from the day that I was appointed to city council.
Thank you. Let me turn to Mario Fonda Bernardi.
Hi. I think in four years, it should not be too long to institute a true citywide, high-speed internet for all of our residents. We have part of the system built up. We have to light it up and extend it. And I think education money should be used for that, because it really intersects with all the issues we've been talking about, intersects with lifelong learning at one end, and intersects with equity issues on the other end, because most people are paying way too much for their internet. If this was a public utility, then it could be run as essentially a nonprofit, and it would be building, part of building a resilient city. Because what's going to happen in the next X years, we're going to see these viruses reappear over and over again. Those can be periodic lockdowns while we develop the vaccines. And so the ability to hunker down depends on having good connectivity and making that cost available to everyone: businesses, students, seniors, people who are hound-bound for whatever reason. And so having that in place would be a great thing to do in the next four years, ideally even sooner than that.
Thank you. Gleam Davis.
So my number one priority is housing. Housing is a civil right. And I believe that our most immediate problems stem from housing. Obviously, the rent's too damn high. We need to figure out a way to build more affordable housing so that our children and grandchildren can live in our community. And we also need to find housing for our currently unhoused neighbors, which means building more permanent supportive housing and other facilities that can get people off the streets. So for me, the number one priority over the next term of the council would be housing.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to our next question, which will be directed at Kristin McCowen and Anna Maria Hara. What is your understanding of the differences between being a candidate and a community activist and a member of a governing board? In this case, the city council. I'll begin with Kristin McCowen.
Sorry, what is my understanding of the difference between...
What is your understanding of the differences between being a candidate and community activist and a member of a governing board? In this case, the city council.
So first and foremost, I am a Santa Monicaan and a resident, right? And then you're, I'm an activist for issues that are important to me. And whether I've been publicly an activist my entire life or privately an activist, there are issues that have always been important to me. And in my current case, I'm, you know, thirdly, on city council representing my fellow Santa Monicans. I think that, I don't think you necessarily leave any behind in the governing role. I think that's the heart, right? That's what informs every decision that you make. I think sometimes in the governing role, you're limited in what you can and can't do. And I think that is very, very hard. It's very hard to articulate that to people when it happens and you become a little stifled. But you never lose your voice and you never lose the heart.
Thank you. Anna Maria Hara.
So that, to me, has been actually one of the lessons to be learned now that I am on city council. I have always been an advocate. I have always been able to bring that voice for everyone forward when it wasn't there or when they were not able to voice their concerns. I am a candidate trying to ensure that everyone knows where I stand and what I would be doing and what I would be responsible for if elected to be the city council member once again. The city council brings on responsibilities and limitations. But yes, that does not mean that my experience and what it is that I've learned through the years is not going to help me make those tough decisions.
Thank you very much. Let me move on to the next question, which will be directed at Todd Minch and Mario Fonda Bernardi. The question is, what will you do as a city council member to increase participation in local government by residents who are currently underrepresented in discussions about the city's future? Be as specific as possible. I'll begin with Todd Minch.
Thank you for that question. So free internet is a great idea. I think we should work towards it. I don't think everyone needs free internet. I think some of us can afford to pay and should. I don't mind paying. I don't think we can have free all the internet. I think if, oh, let's say 75 or so thousand residents and another 100,000 visitors all jump on and watch Netflix, we might have a problem. So we can't do that. But as it relates to your question, we can have a Santa Monica-only, developed-in-house, social media-ish application developed that brings all residents in to a safe space where they can interact with their local government and have their voices truly heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn now to Mario Fonda Bernardi.
Yeah, I think the participation of the residents of the city really depends on how much of a stake they have in the city and how much feeling they have of impact, of being able to affect the city, get the outcomes they want. And up to now, I think our city has been rather detached. It does things essentially without explanation and without transparency. So the first thing I would like to do is open that up and let people essentially see what's going on. We have a horrible way of handling people who come to testify at city council. There's always these delays. They have to wait in line. They get turned off. They get dropped. It's really not functioning. So the first thing to do is really streamline that thing and make it really well. Though the meeting we're having right now on Zoom, which is really a very simple, primitive platform, they can't have it at the city council. They can't manage even that level of simplicity today. So that's one of the things I think would have to change. The other thing is that, you know, the neighborhood groups, I think, are the core of Santa Monica, because people really do identify with the neighborhoods. And as legitimate as they are...
Thank you. Let me move to the next question, which will be directed at Gleam Davis and Kristin McCowen. What do you see as the, and it's underlined in my script, the most important responsibility of being a city council member? And I'll begin with Gleam Davis.
So I think the most important responsibility of a city council member is to make decisions with the entire city in mind. You previously asked a question about the difference between an advocate and someone who's governing. And when you're an advocate, you can have blinders on and say, "This is my issue. This is what I care about, and I don't care about anything else." When you're a council member, you can't. When a council member, you have to meet with the people who you know will never vote for you or who don't agree with you and hear what they have to say. And you have to take all sides into account. And then the criteria for decision can't be, "What do I think is best for Gleam Davis or for people I like?" But it has to be, "What is best for the city?" It's a 30,000-foot view. And I think that's really hard sometimes for people to understand, that when they advocate for something and we don't do what they want us to do, we're not rejecting their idea, but we're looking at a bigger picture. And I think that's the number one responsibility, is to take in all the public opinion, but make a decision that is best for Santa Monica as a whole.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen.
Yeah, so, and not to piggyback on Gleam, but I think it's sort of an answer that goes without saying when you actually hold the office, which is, and in an at-large, this is why it's also so beneficial. You really have to take into account the concerns of all Santa Monicans. I think that's the most important thing that I can do in an ethical way and an honest way. So for me, that means I give as much time to everyone that reaches out, regardless of where they're coming from and regardless of what my personal opinion is. I've had really interesting conversations as of late with people who fundamentally disagree with the idea of a black agenda, something I completely support. And they, but I still give them time and we talk through the issues and why they disagree. I think that is my job as a councilperson. It's my number-one job.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to move on to the next round of questioning, which relates to the environment and quality of life. I have two questions here, and different subsets of all of you that are here will answer a different question. So the first question will be directed at Mario Fonda Bernardi and Kristin McCowen. That question is, what do you define as the most important environmental issue facing Santa Monica? If elected, you will be one of seven council members. How will you work with other council members to resolve this issue that you consider most important?
Yeah, most important issue that we face as a city is global warming and all of its manifestations. We're slowly going to lose our beach over the next 80 years. We have to prepare for that. It's inevitable. We also have to prepare for global warming, which will change the whole canopy of the trees of our city. We'll have to have a whole new, different kind of tree. We should be planting that today. We should also be converting more and more of our cars away from petrol and gas, more toward electric cars, which can be recharged renewably from our own roofs through photovoltaics. And so those three parts, which is adapting the sea level change, dealing with global warming in our urban canopy, which keeps our city cool, and shifting over to our automobiles, which use a lot of our power and generate a lot of our pollution, to all electric cars. Those would be my three positions on the environment.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen.
So the question is, what do you define as the most important environmental issue? Obviously, climate change and global warming is the most important issue. But I think how we deal with that locally, the most important thing we can do is continue to work toward ending auto-centric culture in Santa Monica. You know, for me, automobile-focused culture is what led to a lot of our environmental injustices in this community. A focus on cars and bringing traffic into this community, I think is what's, you know, ruining our environment, and we need to move away from it. So whatever we can do to create more greenways, to look at potentially capping freeways, to have walkable pedestrian-friendly streets, to build inclusive housing when we create jobs, all of these things will get us toward less of an automobile-focused culture, which will ultimately start the healing of our environment.
Thank you. The next question is directed at Todd Minch, Anna Maria Hara, and Gleam Davis. The question, sustainable, livable communities are characterized as denser, walkable, and bikeable neighborhoods with mixed-use development. Do you believe this is the appropriate direction for the city? Why or why not? And I'll begin with Todd Minch.
Yes, I do believe that's the appropriate direction for any innovative city of this century. You know, there's going to be people who want to and who have the means to live your stereotypical suburban American lifestyle. I've never been one who particularly wanted that. I like the energy of a more dense living environment. I like to walk rather than drive a car, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, I do think we have to adjust our thinking on how we're going to live in the future. I think the younger generations are thinking that differently already, and the spaces that we create need to reflect that change. So more communal living, less personal space, and more shared spaces. Our mixed-use buildings have to accommodate for that reality, that someone in the next 50 years is going to be happy living within a thousand square feet or less and sharing open space environments with other people in the building.
Thank you. Anna Maria Hara.
Yes, I believe it's definitely the right way to go. I think that a lot of us are not comfortable with growth. But unfortunately, we have to make that space. We have to ensure that we provide sustainable housing along the corridors, that we are able to have mixed use along the corridors, close to transit, in order for us to continue to look at the environment and make it as clean as we possibly can. I think that we need to ensure that our, like I said before, that our residents are able to self-sustain, finding ways of working with other agencies and/or our labors, so that way they can be ready for when we have new opportunities for them, then they will be ready to take on those roles for small businesses as well.
Thank you. Gleam Davis.
Thank you. So I totally agree with that statement. I really would love to emulate what Mayor Hidalgo in Paris is doing. She's creating what she calls the 15-minute city, which means that all of your basic needs, whether it's food, medical care, clothing, whatever, would be within a 15-minute walk or bike trip of your home. And the idea, of course, is, as Councilmember McCowen said, is to reduce our dependence on the automobile. I don't like the term "density." I think it's gotten a bad rap. I think instead of talking about density, we should talk about building neighborhoods. Because what we find is when we're talking about people, we're not talking about putting automatons in buildings. We're talking about our children, our grandchildren, people who need housing, moving into our city. And I think when we build compact cities that have green space, that have the amenities that people need, and we're not talking about building 25-story buildings, but we are talking about building something higher than two stories. And I think we'll find we have better, more robust, vital neighborhoods that are set up to be sustainable in the future.
Thank you. So we're at round seven. And this is a two-part question that will go to everyone, so we can all listen up for this one. The two-part question comes from our neighborhood organization. First part of the question, are you accepting campaign donations from the police union? Second part of the question, are you accepting developer funding of your campaign for city council? Why or why not? I'll begin with Todd Minch.
Okay, quick and easy. No, I'm not accepting any funds from anybody. I'm entirely self-funded. I believe in this day and age, with all of the free digital advertising available to you out there, to just get your message and your platform and your ideas out there on YouTube, for instance, there's really no need to take any funding from any organization. I welcome support from all. I've had offers of support, monetary and otherwise, and I've said thank you and politely declined. So no, I'm not accepting any campaign support. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen.
So I've, I, I was not endorsed by the police union. I didn't ask for their endorsement or seek it. So I, I doubt I'll be receiving any funds from the police union or financial support for an IE. Developer funding, I, I don't know. I mean, I have some friends that work in development. I, I'm not sure if they've donated. You know, three hundred and forty dollars is the most I can take from anyone. I don't believe that necessarily buys you anything. I don't think any amount of money buys you anything. But, um, so I, I haven't said that I wouldn't take money from like a personal friend or someone I grew up with. But, um, but I, I think the question they're asking is directly from development that has issues in front of council. And to that, I'd say no.
Thank you very much. Ana Maria Hara.
So I did seek the endorsement of the police department because I think that it is important for us to continue the communication with them. I have been a long community advocate of finding the ways that we can communicate and engage with the police department in order for us to figure out a way of bringing true community policing. And we've worked for twenty years on that. And I think that it is important for us to continue that conversation with them because we've come a long way with them. Now, as far as development funding, the Oaks Initiative prohibits us actually from taking funding from them. And that is something that I do have up. And I will definitely not take any funding from developers.
Thank you very much. Mario Fonda Bernardi.
No and no to answer those two questions.
Thank you very much. Gleam Davis.
So I did not seek the Police Officers Association endorsement, primarily because we're at this crucial juncture where the council is making important decisions about the future of our police department. And I didn't want to give the appearance of impropriety by taking any, whether it's endorsement or monetary support from the union. You know, the word developer is one of those words, kind of like density, that people throw around like a curse word. I do take money from people who build housing. I take money from people who build infrastructure. I do not take money from anyone who has a project pending before the city council or might have a project pending. I do not take money in violation of the Oaks Initiative, as Councilmember Hara mentioned, which means that anyone who has a contract with the city, we cannot take campaign contributions from them for some period of time. So I abide by the law. But I think the fact that somebody builds housing should not disqualify them from contributing to a campaign. And as Councilmember McCowen said, no amount of money, whether it's a dollar or three hundred and forty dollars, has ever influenced a single one of my votes and it never will.
Thank you very much. We're inching towards the conclusion of this session. This is the last question of the evening and it is a request. We are asking a question that was submitted by a community member overwhelmed with the number of choices for city council. So the request, and, and in fact, Ms. McCowen, I'm going to ask you a different question separate from this. Without referencing the other candidates, look into the screen and tell us why we should vote for you as one of our four choices for city council, when there are eighteen other candidates to choose from. I will begin with Todd Mensch.
You should vote for me because you want change. Everyone I spoke to while gathering signatures, everyone said that they are in some way displeased with what has been occurring, the direction the city is going in, the Y response to the X issue that just happened. And we can all insert the variables there because it's been such a tumultuous time in 2020. So you don't have to say a name or say, point out any particular initiative. I don't think, I think it's unfair to blame a single individual or to blame a massive institution, like a huge city of Santa Monica. But to say, I don't like a direction that we're heading in, and then to vote again for the same people who've been steering the ship, whoever they be, past, present, is counterfactual. You should, if you want change, you should vote for someone who has never done.
Thank you. Ana Maria Hara.
So I have been there advocating for equity in our public schools for decades. I have been there working to ensure economic recovery as a safety net for our most vulnerable residents, like the rental assistance program. I have been there walking side by side with labor unions since before Measure JJ, fighting for the rights of our workers and the most marginalized. I have been there looking for new ways to engage civic participation for all and pursuing for language justice. I bring practical knowledge and real-life experiences, feelings, and know how to do all of that here on the council. I am, I live in a rent-controlled unit and know that the day concerns me when half of our population in this city may lose their housing. That concerns me. And I have brought about some of those changes in order to protect them.
Thank you very much. Gleam Davis.
Well, elections are always about change. It's the theme of every election. The question is, who can accomplish that change? And I think, believe it or not, somebody who has been working with the other council members within this community for over thirty years is a person who can effectuate change. Every year, this council changes things for the better, I believe. But the fact of the matter is that we're facing really difficult programs. The things that people love in this city, whether it's our libraries, whether it's the programs we offer to our youth, we are in danger of losing for economic factors. And so you want to have somebody who knows how to work with the business community to help rebuild our economy, someone who understands the complexities of housing and how we can make housing more affordable and more available to people who are unhoused. Someone who understands that homelessness is not about putting people on buses and taking them out to Palmdale, but really involves a multifaceted approach to an incredibly difficult problem. And I am that person. I'm a thoughtful progressive and I hope people will vote for me.
Thank you very much. Mario Fonda Bernardi.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually the environmental candidate here. And I would like to speak to the issues that have not been well represented on our city council, which is what's happening with our water supply, what's happening with the overdevelopment of our city. We cannot build buildings higher than three stories and make them net zero, meaning producing all the energy they need. And even if we could build on the fourth story, that extra energy was going to have to go into our electric, electric mobility devices. So there's a really need on our city council for an environmentalist. And I would be that person. In addition, I'm extremely well-prepared for all the years of doing different activities around the city. I know how the city works. And being an architect, I've dealt with the bureaucracy in a thousand and one different ways. And I could see, everywhere I look, I can see things for improvement. Because, you know, it's just staring you in the face. The city is not well-run in so many areas. And actually, it's even less well-run now because so many of the staff are gone. But the point is, there's so much room for improvement. And I think that I'm the person to do that.
Thank you. Kristin McCowen. Your question, your status is different from the nineteen candidates our community member referred to in the previous question. So we would like you to please let our voters know why they still have this, while they still have this opportunity to vote for you, even though your race for the two-year council seat is uncontested.
So I, I mean, I, because I was appointed, I currently sit on council, but I'm very new. And so really, it is voting for to keep a new voice on council that's adding to the conversation, I think. We are in really interesting times. And when Councilmember Morena resigned, we lost the only person on council who was homegrown. I think that perspective is really important as we look to what direction we want the city to go in over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Because we have to think about the future of our city and not so much. And, and so I am able to offer that perspective. I'm currently the youngest person on council. I have very young children. I was raised here. I, I think I bring a different perspective. And I think it's one that I hope people will continue to support and want to see on council.
Thank you. In, in closing, we'd like to thank the members of the community who have taken time to send in so many thoughtful and important questions. As you might have guessed, we haven't been able to include all of the questions in tonight's forum. But we will be using more of your questions in next week's city council forum. At this time, we definitely would like to thank our candidates here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund and the Human Relations Council, Santa Monica Bay Area. They all want to thank you for taking part in tonight's forum and for stepping forward to run for office. We also want to thank our timer, that person behind that green square, Ms. Gentile, and Natalia Zerneskaya, our forum tech administrator. This forum has been livestreamed to the League's YouTube channel and will be available for replay on the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica channel. For more information on both local and state elections, we encourage you to check out Voter's Edge at www.votersedge corp.org. Voter's Edge is the League of Women Voters of California nonpartisan online guide to federal, state and local election. And we do invite you to join us for part two of the City Council Candidates Forum next Wednesday, September twenty-third. To find the listing for the forums and links to register, please go to the League website at leagueofwomensvotersatamonica.org. So to the audience that's out there, I want to say thank you for your interest. It truly takes all of us to make a democracy work. And remember, elections are won by those who vote. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.